Myself, Damon Rasick, the Chair, Rick Mullins, Vice Chair, James Hackney, Jason Hicks, Dr. Lutton Law, Tonya Baker, Clerk, Hager Robson, Superintendent. All of those are present except Mr. Hackney, and he will be here shortly. We also have one of the speakers, that's participants, that is going to be a little late, so I'll let Mr. Mullins kind of address how this PPA public hearing is designed and going forward.
Members of the public, the way our system works is we put out a notice for the PPA hearing, the PPA is a procurement tool, and we got some proposals in, and before we move forward, we allow public comment. It's not really required that we do a presentation prior to public comment, but we always do that so that if anyone's here and wants the details of how the process works, that you'll have an opportunity to hear someone knowledgeable speak to it, and then after that's over, to come up and any input you have, the school board has received and appreciated. We learned when we came in that construction manager, program manager, Curtis Elswick with Skanska is going to be a few minutes late, and so we don't want to waste your time or the board's time here tonight, and so I would just say that if anyone came here with something to say about the additional classrooms that are going to be added on in the future, that we're trying to add on, you're welcome now to come forward and speak to the board, and if you're here to learn about that, Mr. Elswick, when he comes in a few minutes, we'll do a presentation, it'll probably be 10 to 20 minutes long, that's my estimate, and after that's over, I'm sure the school board will allow you to come up just like public comment and speak to it if you had questions and concerns about it. So with that, I would suggest, Mr. Chair, that we open up the floor for anyone who came up here to speak at public comment, and then, you know, give that process an opportunity as is required, and then after everyone speaks, or if no one speaks, we move on to the public portion of our meeting, and then when Mr. Elswick gets here, my recommendation would be to allow him to do his presentation, to allow any public, any members of the public who want to speak to it to come forward then and speak.
Let's sort of rearrange the agenda, do we say that we're going to approve the proposed agenda as stated?
Yes. Mr. Elswick, there are no agenda revisions to the public hearing agenda, we will just need a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. I'll change that one, we'll get called up here in a moment. Mr. Elswick, not been here, terms of this are annulled, so we'll let any member of the public that wishes to come up and address the public hearing to step over to the microphone and to do so. If you're sure for that purpose, we changed the agenda round to make that possible in the beginning.
And Mr. Chair, just to be clear to everyone, and myself included, there will be another public comment at the regular board meeting that will happen very soon for regular board affairs. This is a public comment associated with the procurement relating to adding on additional classrooms.
Seeing number one here is appropriate to declare recess when Mr. Elswick comes since he is a program, we can let Mr. Burge go ahead and he sit up for the...
That would be fine, but Mr. Chair, as far as I'm concerned, I think that Mr. Hackney is going to be here around 5:30, is that correct?
Yes.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, and it's 5:08 now, so I think it's the board's pleasure, I think that public hearing, we have done what the law and our policy requires us to do, and that's to give the public an opportunity to speak, so I think that we can continue on, and when Mr. Burge gives a construction update, Mr. Elswick in a regular meeting can speak to it then, and so I don't think we really need to wait until he gets here because I don't think we have any assurances that he's going to be here, so I think we can go ahead and go to it.
So we've met the full form of the law regarding the public hearing at this point?
Yes, we've met the law on...
Given the fact that we've met that responsibility, I ask, is there a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
We just need a motion to adjourn the public hearing, please.
Is there a motion to adjourn the public hearing at this time?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion passes, and our meeting keeps...
We can begin our regular board meeting.
Okay.
We have several guests here tonight because we are going to recognize staff and our students and their achievements, so welcome everyone. Go ahead, Mr. Elswick.
The motion I'm pleading to the Dixie County School Board is now in session. For the record, I'd like to recognize that all school board members are present except Mr. Hackney, and he's expected in a moment, as well as Tonya Baker, Board Clerk, Scott Moll, School Board Attorney, and Mrs. Robinson, Division Superintendent. At this time, would you please stand to the president's and our board's silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone has the agenda for the announced meeting, are there any additions or revisions to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, there are no revisions to the agenda.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Are there any more discussion? All those members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. This brings us to public comment. Does Jason have that to read?
Mr. Hicks may.
He will now read the guidelines for public comment. Ms. Martin, will you please be our timekeeper?
A period of time for public comment will be designated on the meeting agenda during which the public may comment on issues related to public education. The Dixie County School Board believes that the citizens of the county should be heard and that this is an acceptable format for receiving public comment. After the public comment section, the meeting is closed, the public shall not be allowed to participate in general board member discussion regarding agenda items. Public participation with the board members regarding agenda items can be disruptive, and the practice is prohibited by Robert's rules of order. It is the desire of the school board to treat each member of the public fairly and equally. Allowing one individual to participate while excluding others is unfair. The board may hold such public hearings as may be necessary to allow the public to more fully express their concerns, or the board may place the public comment section of any meeting at the end of the meeting to allow additional public comments. While we do not wish to restrict the free expression of opinion, we feel that certain restrictions may be necessary so that order and reasonable standards of decorum may be maintained. We ask that the following standards be adhered to. The speaker will be recognized by the chair, each speaker will be limited to five minutes, speakers will refrain from the use of vulgarity or profanity, and will avoid negative or embarrassing comments directed towards specific children or students. Board members should not respond to issues presented by speakers unless clarification is necessary. Matters of concern raised under public comment will be referred to the proper official for investigation and future board consideration if necessary.
At this time, the board recognizes Miss Kathy Music with VPE. Kathy?
She's not here, Mr. Chair.
I think she told us last month she could not be here. Mr. Sean Tiller with DEA.
Sean?
Once again, thank you all for allowing this time to speak. Is this on?
It is, just speak a little bit louder.
All right, I'll try. Thank you. We, two of us, myself and Chandra Mullins, we just attended the VEA convention in Roanoke this weekend, we got back, we had good representation from what our district is, from the surrounding counties, we got to meet and talk to a lot of friends in other localities. We held our monthly meeting last night, yesterday, we're all anticipating, like everyone else, the budget that's coming out. We have no questions have come forward yet, I think everybody's just kind of just waiting to see, so I haven't received any questions, I don't know if any's come through.
No, sir, we have not.
Okay. Anticipate when the budget does happen, that perhaps then we might have some questions, and hopefully we'd be able to clarify anything in the meetings, the meeting that we'll have set up for when the budget does happen. The meeting with Mrs. Robinson, the association and/or the faculties, I don't know how she wants to do it, will bring out some more information. As an association, still going through the transition process, still doing the crossover, taking over for Ms. Mullins, Ms. Phyllis, where she had to retire on us, so I'm still getting my feet established as the new president, and I look forward to hopefully what's going to be a positive budget season, really, really hope so. I know a lot of teachers are talking, they're really, really hoping that everything works out in favor of the faculty this year, so thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Has anyone else signed up for public comment?
No, they have not, sir. Ms. Martin was... No, sir.
Our next agenda item is the consent agenda, which includes the approval of minutes, approval of monthly bills, revenue and expenditure summary, discussion of school activity plans, approval of field trips, approval of elementary school construction invoices, the approval of the bank reconciliation documents and health statement account, any questions or discussion on the consent agenda. Here in mind is a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion passes. Our next agenda item is information for the school board, Ms. Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You'll notice the conferences that are available from VSBA this spring and summer, you also received a working meeting for Region Seven VSBA, which will be held on April 27th at Smith County, and we'll have more discussion on that if you would like to attend this conference or any conference listed. If you'll please let our board clerk know, and she'll be more than happy to register you for any of those conferences. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Ms. Robinson, will you please tell us about Good News Farmer Schools?
It's my pleasure, too. It's always wonderful when we have our auditorium filled with students and parents and teachers, and we know that we are going to recognize many of our students and their staff for their achievements, and I'd like to ask Mr. Chris Robinson if he will please come to the podium, and would he please introduce his DECA staff, if you notice that they are dressed for the time, you see, and it's very impressive, and so thank you, Mr. Robinson.
Yep. Good evening, Ms. Robinson, and school board members. On behalf of the DECA members and myself, we would like to thank you, Ms. Robinson, for inviting us to the board meeting tonight. At this time, I'll go ahead and announce the students that competed at the state DECA competition, which was held back in March, or at the 1st of March. Bring them up on stage.
Yes, I'd be great, Ms. Robinson, if their parents are here, if you'd like them to stand so that we can recognize them also, that would be great.
All right. First on the list is Cohen Powers, job interview. And his mom is here. Next on the list is Corey Gray, Corey competed in apparel and accessories. And I think Corey's mom is here, yep. Hayden Mullins, Hayden competed in business marketing series. Xavier Wilson, he competed in food marketing, but he cannot be here tonight due to a prior commitment. Next is Ethan Cox, competed in business finance series.
Just be real careful, board members would like to shake your hands.
Next is Carol Atkins, human resource management was her category. Catherine's mom is here also.
Ms. Martin, can you take their picture? Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you.
And last but not least is Kalina O'Quinn, Kalina competed in principles of hospitality
And last but not least, their instructor, Mr. Chris Robinson. And last but not least, their instructor, Mr. Chris Robinson. Mr. Robinson, would you like to join for a picture, please?
Yep, sure.
Did you say Mr. Robinson was recognized as outstanding advisor? Thank you, he missed that one, okay.
Where's your blazer? Where's your blazer? Still looking for it. Left it on the bus. Yeah, there you go.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you for sharing that, Ms. Powers. Mr. Robinson tells me he's gotten it twice, so... He's not told me either time.
Sure, you're supposed to share those things. Thank you, congratulations. Great job. Yeah, I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We also have members of the USA Skills Automotive Winners, and I'd like to recognize those. And if their parents are here, if they will please stand. And we'd like to ask them to come up and just come as the DECA students did. Mr. Mullins could not be here with us this evening. First place in collision repair, this is for the USA Skills Automotive Winners. First place in collision repair, Peyton Ratliff. Peyton, are you here? Is Peyton's parent by here or...?
Oh.
Thank you. So much.
Second place in collision repair, Cody Homemaker.
Thank you for coming, thank you.
Congratulations.
Cody, if you'll just stay right up there because Cody Homemaker also received second place painting. And Peyton Ratliff also won third place in painting. So congratulations to these two. And would our families please stand again to be recognized along with our students.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen, and thank your families for coming. That's great. Of course. All right.
And Ms. Bryant, Ms. Hall? I knew her when she was Ms. Bryant. Ms. Joy Bryant Hall is our Beta Club sponsor, does an excellent job this, every year. And she has just returned from the Beta Club convention. Is there anything that I need to know about you, Mr. Robinson, if you hadn't shared with me?
I have it on my list.
Oh, you're on the list, okay, good. All right. Would you like to ask your ladies and gentlemen to come to the front, and if the parents are here, if they please stand to be recognized also?
So we had about 15 students attend the state convention held in Hampton, Virginia, February 9th and 10th. And at this convention, there's several competitions they can compete in, both fine arts, academic. Basically, if you can imagine it, there's a competition for it, or we've got one in the works for it. So the first award that we earned was first place in club trading pin. And this is a club competition, so anybody involved in the club is able to have input on the design of the trading pin. And Ms. Kirsten Brooks helped design that, so I'll have her come forward. The next competition is living literature. In this competition, students are asked to choose a piece of literature and then act as like wax museum figures depicting this piece of literature. And they do this for about two, two and a half hours with a few breaks in between. But this year, we did The Princess and the Queen, and that also won first place. And I'm so thankful it did because we put a lot of work into this. And students involved in that were Landon Hickman, Cohen Powers, and then these next few students were not able to be here for various reasons. Donovan Burns, Maddie Hayes, and Molly Wells, and then finally, Ms. Gracie Lawrence. Our next award that we earned is for an academic test in social studies. And this is the third time this young man has won this award. We're hoping for a replay at national convention in June, and a repeat next year for his following year in high school, and that's Mr. Landon Couch. Landon also won second place at nationals for the social studies test last summer. I don't think we recognized him for that publicly, so...
Keep now.
Next is campaign skit. At this convention, students are able to run for state office, and as part of that campaign, the club has to come up with a skit that goes along with their speech and their slogan. So our campaign skit this year was Beta Girl. It was a Barbie Girl themed skit. The students involved in that is Ms. Gracie Lawrence, Diamond Delaney, Landon Hickman, Maddie Hayes, and Molly Wells. Second place for Quiz Bowl. And the way this one works is the students take a test as a team before the state convention takes place, and at the state convention, if they're in the top eight, they are allowed to participate in live rounds where they have the buzzers, and they have to buzz and answer the questions. It was very tough competition, and I have to say, I'm a little heartbroken that it was second place because there was some kind of controversy surrounding this, but nothing we can do about it now. But I'm still proud of this second place finish, and that was Mr. Bode McKinnon, Landon Couch, David Farmer, and H. Mullins. Excuse me. And for state office, we ran a candidate for vice president. And that candidate was Ms. Harmony O'Quinn, who was installed as the Virginia State Vice President at our convention.
That's fantastic.
And the final student recognition, there is a state scholarship given out every year at the state convention, and Ms. Kirsten Brooks was one of the winners of that state scholarship. And for, let's see, I'm trying to do math. So in 2021, I was installed at Virginia State Direct. And starting in July of this year, I will be officially acting as the Virginia State Beta Senior Sponsor.
All right.
Ms. Hall, would you come to the front and let us have your picture and...?
Oh, wait.
Oh.
I don't want to leave out my other sponsors. Some of them were unfortunately not able to be here, and our chaperones in help. So Ms. Harmony O'Quinn was also with us at convention and is a Beta alum, and has been invaluable to me as far as helping practices, coming up with ideas, just being a great help overall, so I didn't want to not recognize her. And also, Ms. Tiffany Kennedy, could not have done this without her at all, and she was unfortunately unable to be here tonight. Lenore Jones is one of our sponsors, and it's always been to do the best for us. Couldn't have done it without her. We do have other sponsors, but they were unfortunately unable to be involved with convention this year. And even though he's not here, I want to say a special thank you to Mr. Dennis Kennedy. Because of an emergency, we ended up with no male chaperone the day before, or about two days before we were scheduled, and I'm like, we need a male chaperone. And Mr. Dennis Kennedy was so kind to step up and be that male chaperone for us, and was also invaluable on this trip. Several of the students asked, can he come to national school with us? And I was just like, no. That's his busy time of the year. But we absolutely loved having him, so I just wanted to say thanks to him as well.
Would you please join me? Would you please join me in sharing an applause for our staff members that participate with these students and also our parents for their support? Thank you so much. If you'd like to. Just be real careful. Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming. Thank you. Nice job. Guests, we will continue with our meeting. You are welcome to remain for the rest of our school board meeting, or if you'd like to just take a few moments and leave at this time with your families, you're certainly open also to do that. So we'll have just a few moments. Thank you. And thank you for coming. All right. At this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Martin to come, please, to the podium in the grace attendance and allow it for all our schools. Thank you.
Good evening, board. She always seems to put me behind those really, really good news. But I do have good news as well. For our attendance, our enrollment does show that we are equal. We have not lost students, nor have we gained students, so that is a positive. We remain at 1,985, so that is good news. For the month of, for the month of February, because of course we're always a month behind, the Oregon Town Elementary School once again had the best percentage for attendance with 9.89%. In the packet, as always, is your monthly percentages. There's the list of the entries and withdrawals for each school, so you can see that. There's a breakdown for the enrollment per grade, which also includes the three-year-old program and pre-K. There's, I gave you a full month breakdown for chronic absenteeism to let you look at that. And then there's also the monthly picture. I know you enjoy seeing how the incentives for perfect attendance is. I asked Mr. Edwards what he was doing to continue to win this attendance banner, and he said that the key to the attendance banner was a bouncy house. He said those kids will come to school if you have a bouncy house. So I've shared that with the other schools. The high school doesn't buy into that, they said they were not getting a bouncy house. The other elementary schools are thinking about that. So I may be coming next month asking for money to buy bouncy houses. I joke, but that is what Mr. Edwards did tell me. I do want to just update you on Engage Virginia. We've talked about that the last couple of board meetings. We have submitted students for that, and that is the program that I told you about from BDOE. But that is another layer that we're helping our students with, that they provide an outreach counselor and an academic coach for our students via online, or through social media, or text messages, or emails. They have begun to reach out to our students, and so hopefully this will help our students that are struggling with attendance, chronic absenteeism. If it doesn't quite help those who have already reached that threshold, it hopefully will pay off for us in the long run for next year. Are there any questions that you may have for the attendance data that I've shared with you or about Engage? Hearing none, I thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Is there anything else in the good news from our schools? Any further comments?
I'm sorry, sir.
Are there any further comments for me?
No, sir.
Okay. Our next agenda item is update on Ridgeview Elementary School. Mr. Edwards, please.
Mr. Alzwick, Mr. Alzwick is here, so if he, after Mr. Edwards' presentation, if Mr. Alzwick could, please also present. Thank you, sir. It's good to have you with us.
Well, good evening. Glad to see everyone here. Things are looking really good over there at the elementary school now. It's nice seeing everything come together, all the finishes being completed, and making a very nice school. For the progress on the main building this month, flooring has been finished. The painting is still continuing, some miscellaneous painting. Ceiling tile's been completed. Furniture's been installed. The sprinkler system's been tested and passed. Sidewell cancellations continue, we still have a few more to do. Thirty petitions were installed this week, this month. We thought they were going to be much later, but fortunately they came earlier. Kitchen equipment is started up. I did find out today that we still need to start up some of the Cleveland equipment that's in there, and they'll be doing that soon in the day, and they'll also be doing the training. Punch list, we think it's going to start next week with Architect, and hopefully... Punch list, we think it's going to start next week with the architect, and hopefully the following week we'll have the health department come and visit the kitchen and look at it and see if there's any issues there. The classroom we, purpose room, they're hanging drywall, finishing drywall, plumbing rough-in above ceiling. The electrical rough-in's been completed. Of course, we couldn't hang the drywall until we did that anyway. The glass has been installed. Roof is on except for the coping, so it's coming along real well. The metal panels are here on site. We expect all of that exterior finishes to be starting in the next week or so to get that completed on the exterior. As far as budget, the main building's still within the budget. Like I said earlier, the furniture install is complete, other than some stuff we have to buy additionally. The classroom we, still in budget, and it still remains on schedule. We already have the furniture for it, so it's already in place.
It's good to see you.
Some of the photos. This one here, as you can see, is between the two buildings. It looks much different today than it did when this picture was taken, and it's going to really look different after the bar, because this will all be sotted. They've already graded it down. They're going to sod on the south side of the building, starting tomorrow. That's going to really make things pop, and the planning should start pretty quick. Next, this is another picture of the grading that's going on in the front. This is between the canopy and the drive that goes to the kitchen. Next, there's a small shot of the kitchen, very bright kitchen. I think they'll be pleased with the amount of level of light, has air conditioning and heat, and so they ought to be very pleased with all that. Like I said, the hood, they tested it the other week, and they were cooking up a few more controls today. So they started cleaning in there as well, are getting it ready for the health department. Next, another shot of the kitchen hood and progress. Next, this is the cafeteria. They put these nice, pretty panels up that kind of really brought everything together in there, makes a nice airy space in the cafeteria with the glass on the end there. So this should be a very inviting space. Next, of course, this is the stage. Now on the stage, they have the piano, the chairs, the music stands. All of that's been set up now on the stage. These folding partitions are in place, the sound walls, so they are complete now as well. Next, this is the, from the inside looking out on the school bus entrance side, you can see those lights up in the little breezeway there in between the outside glass and the inside doors. You can kind of see those lights hanging down. It's like a little chandelier. It's kind of real modern looking. I think it looks very well. Next, this is equipment. FFNE is set up in the cafeteria. This, it's much more organized now, and there's a lot more stuff in there than this. Next, I hear they were putting some of their stuff together for the media center as well. Next, this is looking down the hall. I wish the ladder hadn't been there, it would have been a really good picture. But they have now, since this picture's taken, the ceiling tile's been installed. Next, another picture of hallway on the second floor. Next, here's a classroom. This would be one of the upgrades, third, fourth, and fifth, set up with the tables and the teacher's desk and the learning section over there in the corner. Next, another area set up, older area as well for the older students. Next, I think that's about all of them. Any questions or any comments at this time? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Burge. Are we ready for?
We're ready for Mr. Ellsworth.
For his, please?
Welcome, sir.
Welcome. Your part presidential tonight. Board members and Ms. Robinson, appreciate.
... opportunity back and give an update on the new Capitol Park, which we're referring to as the Ridgeview Elementary School Classroom Edition PPEA. It's a long title. But I wanted to, if you want to go ahead and flip the slide, I wanted to kind of emphasize what a "another" is the word I'm trying to say here, another great opportunity. As you know, the Corps of Engineers provided funding for this great facility, the high school, middle school, and Tim just gave an update on the elementary school. And as we were working on the elementary school, we got some funding, the ESAR funding and an HVAC grant to build more classrooms onto the school, which will be finished here soon. And then now we got another opportunity to add some more classrooms, if all the stars align, that we hope. So I wanted to, next slide, please, give a little bit of background on this project. So back in mid-January, the school system received an unsolicited PPEA proposal from Crescent Berry's Construction, whose team was ZMM Architects, engineers, and the Lang Group, the same team that's building the elementary school and the additions. That proposal consisted of actually two projects. One was additional classrooms on Ridgeview Elementary, but also a potential new bus garage. After evaluating that proposal, the school system decided in February to accept that proposal for further consideration, but for only the additional classrooms, not the bus garage at this point in time. Once that was accepted, we posted an advertisement for competing proposals. Those were due by the end of last week. We received none, and so we have the unsolicited proposal from Crescent Berry's that we're looking to move forward with. Next, please. So the next steps in the process, following the PPA guidelines, is the board is to hold a public hearing, which was at this meeting tonight. So once that happens, we are going to start entering into negotiations with Crescent Berry's in what we call an interim agreement. So that's a contract for design phase services only for the classroom additions. Per the guidelines, we have to hold a public hearing, and then 30-plus days after this, we're allowed to execute that contract, but not before. And so the clock has started after tonight on being able to move forward with that contract. So we will begin those negotiations tomorrow, similar process that we've had in the past. At the same time, we are looking to find some more money, and so we'll be working with Ms. Robinson to apply with the DOE for what they call a School Construction Assistance Program Grant. It's a competitive grant, but it's not a cash match. There's no strings attached. If you apply and get the money, then you get the money. And so it's another great opportunity to get funding and at no charge to the county. So those grant applications are due by next Friday, the 31st. We'll be working to get that done in the next few days. And then the next steps is we will bring a contract back for your consideration. We have to take it to the Board of Supervisors in April at their planned meeting, April 24th. We have to have their blessing to enter into the contract for your guidelines, and then our plan is to bring it back to you on April 26th. We'll give a presentation, let you know what's in the contract, all the details, and ask for your approval to enter into that agreement to allow us to move forward. Per the schedule, if you approve that contract on April 26th, design for those classroom additions will be done in June. At that point, we understand the DOE would notify us around June 1, somewhere around that time period, of how much money they will give you as part of that DOE School Construction Grant. So the timing actually works well to where we'll have the money, we'll have the design finished, and at that point in time, we will say we can move forward with construction and enter into a construction contract in June. The idea is that if we can do that in June, those additions will be done by next June, by the summer of '24. Tim mentioned we already have the furniture in storage, so we'd move that furniture right in and have those additional classrooms online for the fall of '24. And I believe that is all of my side, a lot shorter than Tim's. Any questions for me?
Any questions, Mr. Burge? Hearing none, thank you very much, Mr. Burge.
Mr. Maston, is there anything you'd like to add, sir?
We will discuss construction a little more in closed session, and I anticipate that when we come out of closed session, you will be asked to pass a motion that will authorize us to continue to move forward as outlined by Mr. Ellsworth.
Does any member of the board have any questions for Mr. Ellsworth? Hearing none, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you all. Have a good evening.
We don't really emotionally think you're at this time.
At this moment, we are discussing the 2023 DCPS Construction Improvement Plan, and with the proposed construction plan, we are asking the board's recommendation and approval of this construction plan. The revised construction plan improvement includes the Ridgeview Elementary School with the proposed additional classrooms. You received a copy of this document. I have it here in case that you would like to see that or the public would like to see that. But this is part of the state construction school, I'm sorry, School Construction Assistance Program. And so this is part of the metric that they're using. As you look at, if you've had an opportunity to look at the construction improvement plan, you'll notice that this came from a facilities agreement done in 2018 of St., I'm sorry, Clarkwood Elementary School and also Irvington Elementary School. And I think it really shows and indicates the needs of the school and of those two schools and the amount of remodeling and also the amount of work that it would take to bring those two schools back to 21st century status. The School Construction Assistance Program includes a criteria of lack of building, access minimization, as required under the American Disabilities Act. Percentage of students for fully reduced lunch, school divisions composite index, percentage of low-income families for percentage of families below the federal poverty guidelines, locality physical stress and debt capacity level locality. In each of these areas, we score above the 65 points required, and therefore we qualify to apply for the Competitive Construction Grant. Are there any questions regarding the Construction Improvement Plan?
So we're going to be proposing the approval of the PPA process for the construction of additional new classrooms at Ridgeview Elementary School.
We will do that, I think, after closed session, Mr. Maston.
After closed session, yes.
Yes, sir.
And this motion summed up as this is votes to approve?
Yes, sir, the Construction Improvement Plan, yes, sir. If you've had an opportunity to clear any questions.
Everyone's had time to read and to hear about the DCPS Construction Improvement Plan. Is there a discussion regarding this? Is there a motion to approve the construction plan as presented?
Salute.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
I'd just also like to thank Mr. Ellsworth and Mr. Burge. They've all been very instrumental in helping us not only to negotiate with the current PPA, but also helping us to apply for the grant and being able then to have part of this project paid. So special thanks for that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
In my folder, that takes us to the school transition. In the handout I had, there was something in between.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, that takes us to the Ridgeview Elementary School opening and transition. One of the items, we try to continue to thank the school board on the transition process, and one of the things that's new on our list is the approval of the, not the approval, but the discussion of the demolition. And so this week, we determined a draft of the demolition process and submitted that to the Corps for their approval. And the process will begin in early July for the demolition of Sandwick Elementary School. In early August, we will hopefully then receive bids for the demolition award contract. Early September of 2023, we're looking at beginning, abatement, and demolition. End of December is the tentative date for demolition completion. And then January 2024, the proposal is to transfer the property to the county as required by the Corps contract. So that is just a review for the board of the demolition schedule. Last week, I apologize, March the 3rd, we distributed the eligibility forms for Ridgeview Elementary School, and as of yesterday, we had received approximately 20 parents who had submitted forms requesting that their child attend Ridgeview Elementary School. So we are working through those and hope to have something by August to inform parents. Just as a reminder, if parents are interested in having their child attend eligibility for Ridgeview Elementary School, if they'll go on the DCPS website, the form is available there for parents to complete, and we will be more than happy to answer any questions or any thoughts that they may have about that. Are there any questions regarding the transition plan, the process? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The next item on the agenda is approval of 2023-2024 D.C. County Public Schools' Budget.
Assistant Ms. Robinson, do you know if we have the PowerPoint presentation?
I'm sorry?
Do you know if we have the PowerPoint?
We do know we have that PowerPoint, thank you. It's the same one we have suggested, so.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Appreciate your time this evening. This will be the third time that we have discussed our fiscal year 23-24 budget in the month of March. We'll let you know that there are no additional changes. There was a small change between the original budget workshop and prior to the public hearing. There have been no additional changes. At this point in time, we do not yet again have a finalized state budget. So tonight, we are asking you to approve the budget that we have presented, and I will go through in just a moment. and I will go through in just a moment. Of course, we all need to have the understanding that this budget is subject to amendment, as any budget is, but more so without a state budget being completed. And you should have a copy of this document. You should be very familiar with your budget documents, fiscal year '24 proposed annual budget. And now we'll just go through these items in summary. For our state funding and revenue, SOQ programs, Incentive programs, $3,887,539. Categorical programs, $38,263. Lottery funded programs, $1940,846. Total estimated state funds for fiscal year '23-24 is $20,603,542. Federal funding estimated for fiscal year '23-24 is a total of $6223,306. The local funding and county operations local appropriation request is $5841,833. Total of other funds estimated in revenue, $298,900. We are estimating additional funds available for fiscal year '23-24 from carryover in the amount of $2683,132. Total revenues estimated for fiscal year '23-24 is $35,650,713. The following page in your budget document, it does start our expenditure budget. Salaries and wages budget for fiscal year '23-24 is $173,98485. Your payroll-related expenditures, that includes taxes and benefits, And on the following page is your non-payroll-related expenditures. That is all other operating expenditures not related to salaries and wages. That subtotal is $7640,714, which brings our total expenditure budget And I would be glad to go over that, any of that, in more detail if you would like. As I said, we do not have any changes, but I can go over any items more specifically if you would so choose.
Does anyone have a question? Ms. Taylor. Hearing none. Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Thank you. And we will need a vote for approval on that.
Do you have a motion for approving the budget, Mr. Mastick?
The floor is now open for a motion for the approval of the 2023-2024 Dixon County Public Schools Budget. How about to approve the budget? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. We'll move to the next agenda item. Ms. Karen Morton, approval of proposed VSVA policies.
Mr. Chairman, we'll also need a recommended motion to approve the policies as presented after Ms. Morton's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Mr. Hagen, your mark is not... I see a pad. Earlier last week, Ms. Robinson emailed you with 16 policy updates. These policy updates were mainly minor changes. There were legal references, cross-references, updates. Two of those were basically, VSVA found some topos, some typographical errors in their original policies, and so they corrected those. So there were just some minor changes made to those policies. We sent this to you to review, and I hope that you had the opportunity to do so. At this time, I ask if you have any questions regarding those policies that we sent you.
I think it lasts for me with the updates, yes.
Okay. Hearing no questions, I do ask that, request a motion for approval for these policies to be updated.
Okay. Did you say that there were two motions or just a one?
Just one, just a little cut off. Yes, sir.
Okay. The discussion is concerning, or the motion concerns the VSVA policies. Is there a motion to approve those as presented? So moved, Ms. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Thank you, Ms. Morton.
Thank you very much.
At this time, we will have board comments. Mr. Hagen, we'll start with you.
I don't have much. I just hate to miss the recognition of the award winners. The students that had the awards academically. And congratulations to all those students. Also just extend appreciation to Tim and Curtis for their presentation. Also, Ms. Taylor for the work on the budget. And seems like that everything's moving forward in a way.
I'm sharing that. It's always great to see the accomplishment of our students and their sponsors and coaches and teachers and all those things. It's all, you know, it's what it's all about. So it's really good to see those things. Really excited about the school. The pictures gets you fired up. Sure it's going to be a welcome sight to students once they get in there. And I'm sure it'll be a sweet day, day one, when they do make it in there. Excited about the possibility of another addition and hopefully we can make that happen. And hopefully Richmond will accept our grant and send it to us. Yeah, that's it.
That's well said. I just have reflected right most between the last meeting and this meeting just somehow things stand. It's still hard for me to believe that $100 million plus came to Dixon County for the purpose of mitigating the dangers posed by flooding, et cetera. And seeing it in operation now for a number of years, it's even more impressive to me than before. Not only looks impressive, it's beautiful. And seeing all the awards come up and all the winners we have and all the competitions and seeing your SOR scores move up from the lower quartile to the top quartile and percentage. And to have all these other competitions and activities that our children basically never got to. At Irvington High School and later Clintwood and Hayson, we had trouble getting the Downs room to the students. You know, the one-person classroom, example. And that was too common in us. And it certainly shut a lot of doors for a lot of students who technology amazed some of that. And we had classrooms taught from Los County and from the college and so et cetera and the schools. And our kids had access to doing enrollment. And I think that will expand here in this environment in a broad and very acceptable pattern. When you deal with pre-K through 12, you also deal, that 12 should expand. You also deal with the college environment with regard to classes and opportunities available to those students that are willing to do the work. And we always have to remember, I think, keep this in mind. I hear people complaining about this and that and the other, and I don't give a yawn myself, so I guess it's okay to complain. But we need to be thankful for what we have and what we're going to have if things fall in place. Every child in Dixon County will have an opportunity to be served by the best regarding education, the best that Dixon County has to offer. There couldn't be a better platform for that here. The instructors that are here, the administration, all the staff, all the employees that have contributed to this and the parents and grandparents. We've got to remember, the people of Dixon County send us the best schools in the county, the best children in the county. They're the best children in the county because we're the only children in the county. And we need to keep that in mind. They need the opportunity like everybody else around this country. And I think that a lot has been done. And a great deal of that goes back to the Corps money coming in and giving openings and doors for us, making the pathway a little broader, a little wider, a little longer, maybe a little easier for those students. And I certainly look at this facility and the people that work here and the students that attend here and the parents and grandparents who take care of them, send them to the neighbors and other family members, all have to do with bringing them up. I don't think it could happen in a better environment than where we are up here on this beautiful mountain.
It's good to see our students get recognized for their accomplishments. Sometimes we tend to focus more on their problems or our problems rather than accomplishments. And it's also good to see the work coming along on the new addition. Hopefully, before too much longer, we'll have all of our students in one location. I believe when I first got on the board, we had five elementary school buildings, three high school buildings, a shop building.
Career center.
So that's about nine different buildings. I believe we're making some progress. I hope we continue.
I'd like to thank Tim Burge and Curtis Ellsworth for coming and giving us the update on the elementary school. What a wonderful job, a job done. I'd like to thank Ms. Taylor for all the hard work that she's done on this budget. And I know it's not been easy. And somebody else I'd like to comment about is Sean Tiller, who stepped up in Phyllis Mullins' is in the DA position. And my hat's off to you, Sean. And I'd like to thank and congratulate Julie Hall with the Deca Club. She has done an absolutely wonderful job here. And my buddy Chris Robinson with the Deca Club has just been so consistent and done such a wonderful job with those children. And that's, I think that's what this school system's all about. It's just, it's a wonderful and it's a blessing.
If there's someone who... We will go into closed session at this time pursuant to section 2.23711, paragraph A of the Code of Virginia. There will be a closed session with the purpose of employment issues related discussion consideration specific individuals for employment as coaches, substitutes pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.23711A, paragraph A and paragraph 1. Two, to consult legal counsel regarding investment of public funds associated with high school construction and consultation regarding actual probable litigation along with consultation regarding specific matters requiring legal advice pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.23711A, paragraph 6, paragraph 7, and 8 of the Code of Virginia. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I oppose nay. Ms. Robinson, we remain on a closed session. Would you please read the certification?
Yes, sir. Whereas the Dixon County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this day pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Dixon County School Board hereby testifies that to the best of each member's knowledge one, only the business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed and two, only such business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered. Would you please certify?
I certify.
I certify.
I certify.
I certify.
I certify.
Are there any motions from closed session?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the PPA resolution as presented in closed session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Are there other motions?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the employment recommendations as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Is there any other business to discuss? Ms. Robinson, is there any?
No, sir, there is not.
Any man do I have motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
There's no seeing discussion, does it? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.